Okay, you're recording.
Thank you. Tonight is the Conley-Dighton's Board of Selectmen's Special Meeting. This is Wednesday, March 6th at 6:30 PM. This is a hybrid meeting via Zoom and in-person at Council on Aging, 1059 Somerset Avenue. Zoom meeting information. Meeting ID is 822-1093-2024. The passcode is 696051. And the phone number to call in is 1305-224-1968. Public input may be provided using the following methods. Contact our office at boardofselectmen@dighton-na.gov to provide input prior to the meeting, or via Zoom, call in by phone at 1305-224-1968. And this is continually played on Dighton Channel 9 and on YouTube at www.youtube.com/toneldighton. This meeting is being recorded. The listing matters of those reasonably anticipate the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Now, all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. We're going to have call to order, Pledge of Allegiance, moment of silence. Please stay standing. And then we're going to have one change after Tom Ferry. That's going to be public input. So can everybody please rise? Or no, I'm trying to repeat, all board at first.
Good evening. Leonard Hall is president.
Nicole Mallon is president.
And Peter Cameron is president. Just please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance. And then again, please stand for the moment.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Since our last meeting, two residents of Dighton have passed. Our sincere condolences go out to their families. Christopher Viera, age 59, of North Dighton, passed away Wednesday, February 14th, 2024, at Brigham and Women's Hospital in Boston. He was the husband of Vita Viera. Barbara Walker passed away peacefully at her Somerset Ave U home in Dighton on March 2nd. She was 92 years old. Thank you.
92 is a great age. Okay, we're going to start writing to schedule appointments. Tom, you're here?
Hi.
Hi, Tom.
Thomas Ferry is always, is the Highway Superintendent. We're going to review, discuss, and act appointment of Tom Ferry to the 250th Anniversary Committee. Then we're going to have a request from 2117 Williams Street, regarding the boulders in the road layout. So, Tom, you want to be on the 250th Anniversary Party? You don't have enough to do?
Going to it.
Okay, great. So is there any discussion regarding Tom Ferry being appointed to the 250th Anniversary?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for appointing Tom Ferry to the 250th Anniversary Committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is in aye. Then we're going to review, discuss, and act a request from 2117 Williams Street regarding the boulders in the road layout. Tom, this is you.
Are we expecting the...
Yes, the whites, I believe, are going Zoom. Joining us, Mrs. White. If you want to unmute, then join us. Perfect. Good evening.
Good evening.
There they are, leaving.
Oh.
I think we're having...
We might be muted.
Is it one... I'm sorry, I've tested this before.
Let me unmute the actual TV if that's the case.
All right, I'm sorry.
Step down the speaker down the bottom two to see what speaker you're on.
Oh, we're on zero, that's why.
Oh, does it? I love that, perfect.
Oh, God. So sorry. Is that loud enough for everybody?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening.
Sorry.
So, the board may be aware that everyone else may not. We identified several locations in town that some boulders were being used in the intersections within our layout. And it's a violation of our bylaws. We can understand some of the reasons why they're there and rationales. But we're in the process of communicating with these residents. And the whites are here also with one of the families. And they're very cooperative to work with. These people live at the intersection of Main and Williams. I think everyone's familiar with those rocks are. So one of the challenges is these rocks fall within our layout. And they're there. The rocks are there to fortify their house. But they're not crash rated and whatnot. But they're on our property. So it's, we're kind of like part of the problem if we got to reconstruct any type of scheme.
Sure.
They're asking for... I'm sorry, let me back up a half a step. Two of the locations, we, myself and Mr. Mullin, will be working this into the Main Street Reconstruction Project with engineering to address these needs in these corners more appropriately than boulders. But we still need them removed in the interim. The whites are asking that you entertain, allowing them to stay there for the window of meantime.
Okay.
So the bylaws do allow that. There is a mechanism that needs to be created. But first, we got to, we need to know if the board is amenable to that idea.
Okay. Two questions for you. What timeframe are we looking at to reconstruct the intersection? Two years, a year?
How? I don't see any reason why it could not happen this calendar year.
Yep.
Engineering and construction.
Okay, so sometime in 2024?
Correct.
And you're familiar with it more than I. I'm aware that they're there and I have seen them. But is it creating more of a safety hazard than is necessary for this to be changed? In other words, in other words, nobody's hit them yet. But is the trade-off, the trade-off worth those boulders being there? I know you can't forecast whether there's going to be an accident. But sightlines are fine and...
The sightlines are fine. She's pointing at the bit because they had a vehicle on top of the rocks already.
Oh, wow, okay. And how close is your house to the rocks?
They did their job.
Yeah.
Oh, yes, sure.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
How close are the boulders to your house?
Oh, our house is actually 12 and a half feet from the road itself. And the rocks are probably like five feet, yeah, six feet.
In the middle?
Yeah, in the middle, yeah.
So you're talking about six feet from your property line, 12 and a half feet from your property line, rocks are in, and then there's another six feet to your house? Correct?
It's 12 and a half feet total. And the boulders are in the middle of that 12 and a half feet.
Right, we own, right?
Right, literally underneath the corner of the house.
Okay.
They have no front yard at all.
Okay.
So it's a, this is a very unique challenge situation.
The good side is you don't have to cut the grass.
Mr. Hall, do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Well, we actually have to do the acting chief weigh in on this.
No.
Mr. Mallon, do you have a question?
I had a question in regards to the accident. I can't think of any other way to phrase this. Was it the boulders' fault? Like, like...
No.
Like, I know the boulders didn't come out. But like, they didn't hit them because they were like impairing the road or anything. It was just, it was the driver.
No, no.
It comes from what you, what you do. And then went back to our employer.
Okay.
So they crossed lanes and the rock actually stopped them from coming further into our property.
Sure, okay.
The poll, is that it?
Yes.
Okay. What do you recommend, Mr. Ferry? If the board is amenable to it, I'd like the board to consider allowing it to stay there in the interim of the engineering. The second part of that paragraph of Section 5 of the bylaws gives us the instrument. I believe Mr. Mullin can create an instrument. So we'll hold Tom List to allow that to happen. Both sides sign it. And I should buy you some time.
Yeah, like, miss... Oh, yeah, like if we, like if we were to work to the point of the Highway Superintendent, Mrs. White, like if we were to work, if we were to work based on the board's approval on a whole harmless and indemnification agreement, we... Oh, 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 would you both be willing to entertain that?
I'm sorry, you're so far away. To entertain what?
Yeah, like, oh, like a whole harmless and indemnification agreement with the, oh, oh, with the towns?
Oh. Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with that said, I'm sorry, Mr. Hall.
No, he was just saying that he's going to have another question.
Okay. I was just going to recommend that the board approve this pending that.
Right.
That way we can keep moving forward.
Sure, yes.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Hall.
I am aware that at the corner of Main and Elm, we have a very similar situation. My question is, if we do for one, should we do for the other?
Yes. I believe we gave them two or three weeks to move them. They were interested in moving.
I know, but should we give them temporary permission to keep the boulders in their current form and location until a resolution can be evaluated in the Main Street project?
They didn't ask for that. They were interested in moving either on their own property, which they can boot. All they have to do is move them back. Because that property's a little bit different. This one, there is literally...
No room.
There is no room at all.
Yeah, I did actually hear from, I did actually hear, I did actually hear from the resident on Elm Street at the end of last week. Again, he, and he actually reached out to me and provided me an update that he will be moving the rocks within the week. He's been just working to get someone to do it. So he is in the process.
And that's where the location of rocks did go back.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we grant temporary permission, that the Board of Selectmen keep, grant temporary permission to keep boulders in their current form and location until the resolution can be evaluated in the Main Street project located, or the boulders located on 211, I mean, 2117 Williams Street.
Before you second that, Nancy, do you have something that you want to add to it?
Yeah, and I'm not opposed to any of this. But I just remembered something. If the town needed to use their property, we would get an easement. In effect, what you're going to do is allow them to use town property temporarily for this boulder thing. This is like crossing the ditch on Brook Street. So what you need to look into is a temporary license agreement that would allow them to use town property, which carries out what you're describing. And Matt Costa helped us with this. Because when we had that episode where they needed permission to cross the ditch on Brook Street to get into the land, it was like, I said, it sounds like a reverse easement, but I don't know how to do it. But Matt says it's called a license agreement. So I believe you need a temporary license agreement. And that will further protect the town. And then indemnification kicks in. All right, so we should look at.
Okay, thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Or somebody else? Oh, hi.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to add additionally. I live very close to this property. And I live on Main Street myself. I think everybody knows where I live. And my house is also a kind of little house on the highway. And something that might be worth checking is it might be worth conferring with the assessors to see if there's a certificate of abandonment for that land on file at the registry. Because I know that my front yard, actually at one point, was technically owned by the town. I didn't know that until I looked at the registry and actually saw that there was a certificate of abandonment. Because my yard, you know, my, as many of you know, my yard is effectively in, in Main Street. And that, I don't know if that would be an additional consideration of any kind. But it might be worth checking with the assessors to see if there's any kind of abandonment certificate on file at the registry.
And when you look into the temporary license, it will contain the description of the property. And the property that we're talking about is practically on the street. That's why they have no front yard. And that's why they're looking to use town property. But again, when that temporary license is issued, it's going to have a description of exactly what is there. The, I'll call it meets and bounds. So what he's saying, that can be included in this.
Sure. Mike, how long would that certificate last? Is there an expiration date on it?
We, based, based on what the whites are requesting, just for the time that we have an ability to like evaluate a, really, a solution based on the engineering and like, again, the construction of the Main Street project. Oh, yeah, I would recommend that we, like, just really to, just really to keep this on the way out. Maybe have a license agreement that could go through the end of calendar year 2024.
Okay.
And then if we don't have a solution, then if we don't have a solution at that point, we always have an opportunity to revisit it. But yeah, like, I mean, like, it really forces everyone to really keep on it. Like, and to, and to hopefully work, hopefully work to identify a solution.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
That license agreement can be open-ended, but it also should have restrictions. The one we have in place that I described, as long as that sole fund is there, it can be used by the owners of the property, sole fund, whatever, to access it. When that goes away, that culprit that crosses the ditch gets removed. And it cannot be used to access the property by anybody. So that the license agreement will go away if the sole, even when the sole fund goes away. So you can have this open-ended. But there would be language to indicate it's for the sole purpose of accommodating this request.
Yep.
And that it will terminate when the resolution to the problem is taken care of.
Taken care of.
As far as timeline, we could make a motion to go through the calendar year, December 31st, 2024, and then seek a license agreement. And then could come back to the board to set vote on more conditions if you will, once those conditions are established by legal counsel.
Yes, like I would, oh, yeah, I would actually recommend once we have a license agreement drafted inherently, it would need to come back to the board for approval anyways. So if we have an ability in the next few weeks to be working with council, I want a license agreement inherently. We would bring that back, we would bring that back to the board for the board to approve anyways.
I'd like to amend my motion to include through the 2024 calendar year.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is in aye. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to take public input of irregular order of business. You said we were going to do.
Yes, number 13.
Number 13 at this time?
I'll second that.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is in aye. We're taking this out of order, so we're going to have public input. Is there anybody here who wants to be heard for public input?
Well, St. Lawrence, 366 Lane of Brighton. This looks worse than it is. First of all, I want to thank all four of you for this week. You spent a lot of time with me trying to deep dive into whatever happened, really get down to facts so we could put out to the public. So I truly appreciate the honesty, the willing to work with me as a resident. And knowing I was putting it out on social media to make sure that the residents got the actual facts. So I do want to thank you all again. Just a couple of things. If we could possibly look into moving next week to the high school for the possible anticipated attendance.
Yep, we've already talked about that.
That's what I figured, but I was told to still mention it.
Sure, that's okay.
I'm sure you know who. The other thing is to, potential to maybe have public input at the beginning and the end of the meeting. So the one thing I actually was able to learn, like with last week's meeting, was I needed to advise the board I was video recording at the beginning. But I didn't know when to say that. And I didn't know, right? Because you start the meeting, you open it up. And it's like, well, do I just stop you? Do I interrupt you? Do I raise my hand? So it's kind of confusing for residents. So that's just a thought process even with that too. And as far as maybe just for people who, like me, have to rush tonight and can't sit through a full meeting, but have important things that I might want to discuss. Just something to think about and discuss amongst yourselves. So talk about it. Then the other thing is, I know you've all heard me speak about it, deep diving into why that process feels with the hiring. And kind of go through everything. I'm so sorry.
I was going to say, that's fine.
Sorry. Probably my son looking for me. And then the last thing I want to talk about is George Nichols. So the one thing I was actually learned from doing all this research, and he, once he became acting chief, his union no longer covered him. So under the union, he was afforded education. He was afforded different things. George stepped up right away when our town was on fire, jumped into acting role, left his protection of being covered by a union. However, did not have a contract with us as police chief. Where in the police chief contract, he's, a police chief is afforded up to $5,000 per year. So I'm recommending to the board, if possible, to discuss that. Because we all know, the minute that the board kind of made the job descriptions, George was next day signing up. He could not go to community college as well, just so you all know. He has to go to SNHU because they actually accept the academy classes. So, as credits. So that's why he couldn't do the community college, which was now through the new state policies. He didn't have a contract, so it couldn't be under the contract. And he was no longer with the union. So I just felt like I'd bring it to you guys to see if that's something you could talk about. I know you, next week's appointments. And if that goes through, and talking to contract, but that would be for the future year. I'm asking the board to kind of look into it and see if we can reimburse them the $5,000 or the $3,000 under the town employee policy, whatever it is, at least something. I feel that somebody who is an acting department head should be afforded the benefits and rights as a permanent. So that's just something, especially going forward with the hiring policies. I know we're going to look in, our boards are going to look into that. But even for right now, if that's something that you could discuss and just because every single avenue he lost.
Right.
So, but thank you all so much. And thank you for switching public input.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, dear.
Yes, thank you.
Next time, Brent Kate.
Yes, I should, I didn't even get anyone yet.
Playing Russian.
Okay, any other public input? Yes, sir. So in attending the last town meeting we had, I noticed a couple of, and I use this term with all the affection in my heart, outsiders appeared and wanted to say something. Now, it's been my experience that if I go over there a free town, town hall meeting, or a Berkeley town hall meeting, they don't allow it. And they're kind of sharp on that point. So I don't want to deny anybody their freedom of speech. But, you know, if the rules are you have to be a town resident to speak at the town meeting, unless there's some extraordinary circumstance, I think we should probably alter that. I leave it to you to decipher that.
Sure.
Thank you.
I know from the time that I served on the school committee that the policy was for outsiders to vote. I mean, to speak. That the town, the residents had to vote to allow their permission to speak. Now, that belongs in the domain of the moderator, not in the domain of the Board of Selectmen. The moderator should have made that, requested that motion. And I think it was a case we all missed. I have a feeling, based on our discussion, that won't happen again. But there is a policy. Mrs. Goode, am I correct?
I was a little confused. Sir, did you mean town meeting or the selectmen's meeting?
Town meeting.
Okay, yes, yes. As a matter of fact, I do believe the moderator said, pointed to the designated seating area. If you're facing out, it's to the right and down front, there's a few rows. As far as being called on or allowed to speak, I'm not sure. What happened? But yes, you are correct. If somebody raised their hand and wanted to speak, they would address the moderator. They would then ask the assembly if they would vote to allow this person to speak. And so the people in the audience, the Dighton residents, would make the decision.
Now, in the case of the Board of Selectmen, at a selectmen's meeting, we don't have a...
No, that's up to the chair.
That would be up to the chair.
Okay. It's the town meeting. That's why I wanted to know what.
Right, no, no, he said the town. We did have some people at the last meeting who weren't from the town spoke. And I did get some question about that.
No, that...
And that was my understanding.
It's legitimate, and also the way it was handled, all the residents that wanted to speak were allowed to speak. Then it was, does anyone else who's not a resident wish to speak? And then residents got up again. So there was plenty of opportunity, the way that the meeting was handled, you know? So that was, you know, I think, I think that met the requirements of, I'll say, rules of order.
Yes, Mr. Attorney.
The Attorney General's Office actually does issue some guidance on this. So the guidance is that the public input is not required, but it is strongly recommended. And then additionally, nobody may speak unless acknowledged by the chair. And so it is at the discretion of the chair to acknowledge. However, the Attorney General's guidance does use the terms that it is strongly recommended that public input be allowed to the extent that time of the meeting permits. So there is no, so there is a degree to which this is discretionary, to the acknowledgement of the chair. But there is guidance that stands as that strongly recommended that it be allowed.
And does it mention non-residents?
No, no, it leaves it almost, it leaves it nebulously to the discretion of the chair. And I believe at our town meetings, please correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that a non-resident who wishes to speak must have their request to speak seconded by a resident. I believe is the requirement.
I know at annual, with the library building project, I had, as you know, the chair of the CBC, I had made a motion to allow the Grant City Partners representatives to speak. And it was seconded and then voted by the body. So there's a protocol for that.
Here you go. Thank you. Anybody else for public input? That's it, anybody out there who wants to speak? Okay, hearing the more, let's move on to...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to return to the regular order of business.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Cameron is in aye. So we're back to number four, to review, discuss, and act So we're back to number four, to review, discuss, and act appointment of Kevin Smith to the elderly and disabled tax fund committee. Mike, you have some new language on that, or language we talked about today?
Yes, I'm actually, I'd actually, I'd actually, if we take a look actually at the language in, like, in actually, in actually, section 3D of, 3D of chapter 60, the language in the statute does say, does say in a city, like, in a city, what kind of establishing an aid to the elderly and disabled taxation fund, there shall, there shall be a tax aid, taxation aid committee to consist of the chairman of the board of assessors, the city or town treasurer, and three residents, and three residents of the city or town to be appointed by the mayor, like, or the board of selectmen, as the case may be. Said board shall adopt rules and regulations, carry out the provisions of this section, and to identify the recipients of said aid. So we do have, we do, we do with the town, having already accepted section 3D of chapter 60, we do have that acceptance already on the books. Like, in of, in other committee that we need to have in place, just by nature, just by nature of section 3D of, of chapter 60, we already have two out, of, two out of the five members already here, like, who are actually, I'm the committee, based on the fact that those two members are named in the statute. Now, now the board has a, has a responsibility to choose, to choose the remaining three residents.
All of the candidates, all of the candidates present to see.
Next.
I'm on Zoom, but I'm here.
Okay. Hi, John.
I will prepare to interview.
To interview, is that what you said?
Yes. I mean, how else would it go into failure?
You just put on the line.
Who's going to be appointed?
Right. Okay.
Now, point of information, Mr. Chairman, I am not on the agenda for appointment tonight, but if you wanted to put me on the next selectman agenda, I will be in attendance that night as well, so I know that the board has policy for candidates to be present for appointments. So just, just so you're right, I will be in attendance next Wednesday as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and I would just clarify, like, I would just, and I would just, and I would just clarify, Treasurer Reynolds, I would just clarify, by nature of what is already existing statute, you, like, essentially, you're already, you, you have been appointed, you've been appointed, you have been already appointed to the committee by law, so you don't have to be reappointed by the board.
Now, regarding the chairman of the board of assessors, does it, and I don't mean this with any disrespect for him, do we know that if he wants to do it or not? And if he doesn't, does the law allow for another representative of the board of assessors to serve?
I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, this hasn't come to the board of assessors.
This is what?
This hasn't been brought to the board of assessors so that we could say to the chairman, in other words, at our, up through our last meeting, we had not discussed something like this. We know that this, this committee is going to be bombed and so forth and so, but if the chairman is, is supposed to be and decides for whatever reason he can't fill it, then I would think the board of assessors could appoint one of the assessors to do it, one of the elected officials.
That's why I'm...
Exactly, but we haven't discussed it, so I don't know what its feelings are.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to table this item for two reasons. One, so the board of assessors can discuss it, and also we can draw a interview questions if you can fairly determine who's on it, who isn't.
I agree with that. Any questions, or do you want to?
I'll second that.
You want to second it, okay.
I don't know if it's necessary, but, I mean, it's, the board of assessors, it reads they're gonna be on it, and we had already known that we would have any spokes coming for us at the last meeting, I just hate to keep putting it off.
Sure. Okay. Can we just ask questions that we're familiar with in the past? Is that okay with everyone? Okay. Kevin, can you go first?
Yeah.
First of all, why do you want to go on this?
So just through the transgression of some communications between myself, the town treasurer, Leanne from, from the board of selectmen's office, we just, some situations came up where we were asked if we could help a couple of different town residents in a few different ways. So specifically, like, myself and Treasurer Reynolds started to explore, you know, different avenues, you know, of ways we could help financially, which is how we kind of stumbled upon this committee and this tax fund. And I think I'm always interested in trying to help in any way that I can. I do want to just kind of openly put it out there too, whatever the board chooses, I kind of, we have spoken to everybody about, because I did ask Mr. Gale, and then Trista and Laura also, if they wanted to be involved, and then we did have a couple of town residents reach out, just for some more information on what is the tax fund is. I think we're all very well aware now that it will be public meetings due, so I think that anybody that isn't appointed, we all have the ability to still participate in establishing the guidelines and the process, and give, and being able to give some input, so I still want it to be like a, you know, town-wide team effort up until it gets to the point where you would go into executive session and review applications.
Sure.
So.
I guess back to my original question, why do you want to do it? I understand the program.
I, I'm just, I'm always kind of eager to jump on if I see an opportunity to help, I kind of like to jump on it, I'm almost overly ambitious.
Sure, I understand that.
And that's not to say, you know, that I'm a better candidate than anyone else, I just want to help.
Sure. Do you have a question for him?
You kind of answered it in what you were saying, but it was kind of just, what could you bring to this committee? What are you looking to bring as, as regards to like extra team yourself?
Well, I think, again, him more so than I, but Mr. Reynolds and I have a very good way of communicating and sifting through Mass General Law and other programs that are available. I think one really big aspect of this is not so much concentrating on solely dispersion of the funds that are available, because as of right now, because it hasn't been promoted, they're relatively small, but I think collectively, we can work together to at least point residents in the right direction. So it's not like they're calling the board of assessors and it's, oh, we'll try filling out this form, and we can kind of steer them towards what we also think is what, what program is best for them. So it doesn't necessarily have to stop at whether or not they're eligible for this fund, we can also help them get in that direction. I think I can just be helpful just because I'm a general modelist.
Sure. Are you going to write that down, so you're asking the same question?
Yes, I wrote it down.
Mr. Hug, do you have a question?
Yes, in regards to the statute, do you see any groups that are not included in the statute that we may want to look at as far as helping, even though the statute doesn't cover that?
So I don't know, it's, you're gonna establish your guidelines to be as broad as, you know, reasonably possible. It's pretty specific that it is, you know, an elderly and disabled fund, and from the examples I had given you at the previous meeting from a couple of different towns, they seem to be in that, you know, 65 to 70-year-old age range, and then the, you know, the financial parameters slide for each town, but I'm not sure.
So when you say disability, what, what groups are included in that?
Anyone who, any, so disability takes the age out of the equation. So if you're a disabled resident, you would be eligible for this fund based upon a financial situation as well. So that's going to just kind of echo what I said earlier, is I think, again, really engaging not just the makeup of the committee itself, but also members of the public to, you know, guide us through establishing the application process and the guidelines will be helpful, because, you know, the fiber of us may not think of something that would be incredibly important to different members of the community.
You have the ability to affect a lot of people's lives, and it would be something that I wouldn't take lightly, so what makes you qualified?
I think just my eagerness to, to, to serve, one, and then again, just the, the general knowledge that I have in my, around the law, the Mass General Law that established this, other programs that are, I spent a lot of time researching other programs that are available through the original outreach that came before the town for that town resident, and finding not just this, but various different programs that they might be, that they could qualify for. And then I just, I like to think of myself as like a good team player, and can, you know, work with just about anybody that, that are at town.
Okay. Mr. Melo, you have another?
No, that's all.
Okay. Mr. Hug, you have another? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin. Trista, hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. No looking at us for everybody else?
(laughing) Time you do.
Oh, thank you.
No, I don't want to be. So sorry.
Trista, you heard the questions.
Yes.
Obviously, you've got an advantage over Mr. Smith, because now you know what to say. But the first question is, why do you want to serve on this committee?
I think for me, my entire career since I've been in the working force has been in healthcare, but specifically with elderly for the majority, and that comes with disabilities as well, so I have 15-plus years of knowledge with the population, and coming here, and being here for the last year and a half, almost two years of learning a little bit different of their needs. And unfortunately, between me and Laura, have been having quite a few residents call and come in here that are facing homelessness, and they're coast surfing, and they're living in cars through the winter, and they're in a really, really bad position. So we've been trying our hardest to do research for resources for them, to send them in the right direction, to people that they can trust, that will take care of them and their needs. And when we were kind of, had our hands wrapped up with a couple of residents at the same time that were facing this situation, Kevin approached us, it was honestly perfect timing, and I had never heard about the fund, so everything I know about it is just what Kevin has, what we've talked about, what we've discussed, and I just, I want to kind of piggyback off of him, I'm eager to help these people, this is what I do every day, this is what I've been doing for years and years, and I just want, I want to be able to help them any way that I can, and I'm willing to do whatever work and research needs to be done to be a good member for the committee.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for one second?
Sure.
I'm gonna withdraw my application, because this was a thought of mine prior to even speaking about this. One, one other thing that is, I actually, I'd really like to see, Jonathan and I were on a million things. He probably has more tax knowledge and different financial knowledge than I do, I'd really like to see new people get involved, I'd still just like to be part of the process, but I, I'll withdraw, just to make it easier.
Okay.
I'd like to withdraw now.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate that. There was some like redundancy, so it was gonna make it challenging, I kind of put you and Jonathan together, and then I put them together, and...
Right, there's a lot of, yeah, a lot of both categories, but...
And I was like, which redundancy?
Yeah, no, I, I really like, I like, yeah, to see people other than the same, like, we're on, we're on everything, but I, you know, I'm still absolutely willing to help them like that, because it is a public process, I'll still give my input and then...
Okay, great.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So what, do we still have to?
No, I don't think that's necessary, at this point.
If everyone's okay with that.
Okay. So make a motion to appoint Tristan Tate?
I'm, I'm sorry, this is Jonathan, you want me to wait, or did you, I just want to make sure you still don't want to hear, that's all.
We're not gonna ask any more questions, Jonathan, because Kevin Smith has withdrawn his name, so we can appoint all three of you tonight, unless there's something you want to say?
Not too much, actually, I'll just, I'm just, I, we'll tell you very simply, just in general terms.
Sure.
For you to know where I'm coming from. I've worked with the Massachusetts Department on Elder Affairs, on projects similar to this in other ways, for other formats, but not directly specifically related to people who own homes. There are a lot of opportunities for us to work with the state to make this project work, I think that bring some ideas and concepts to us that we haven't even thought about yet. There are a lot of seniors in our community, and people in my case, that I work with, specifically with disabilities, who I agree, as was already said, we have people who are going without heat in the winter because they're afraid to not be able to pay their property tax currently, or they're going without food in certain cases, a lot of these folks are on very specific incomes that are fixed. It might just be social security of seven, eight, $900 a month, or social security disability, or something like that, or a small pension, and they can't get social security if they worked years ago, for example, for the Commonwealth or something like that. So those are the kinds of folks that I think we want to be able to reach, they're afraid to reach out to the town, and often it's because they're afraid if they reach out and the town knows they're in dire straits, they might run the risk of losing their home. This gives us an opportunity to look at other alternatives, not just to reduce, potentially reduce their tax, their tax that they're currently paying, but in some cases, to set up alternative formats if they can't pay it, so that the town may hold it in a bay until at some point, I hate to say it, the person's deceased, the property has to be sold, etc. There are a lot of ways for us to look at this, I think, and I think there, we would find that there are more residents taking advantage of it, once it's out there, and we establish the guidelines, we'd probably be surprised at the numbers, actually.
Okay, thank you, Jonathan. Is there a motion on the floor to appoint Tristan Tate?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, at this time, to appoint Tristan Tate, Laura Maderas, and Jonathan Gale to the elderly and disabled tax fund committee.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Mr. Chair? Yes, question?
Please forgive my ignorance, does any of this action that they're gonna take on involve redirecting public funds?
No.
No. And, and, in the, in the, there seems to me to be a variety of organizations, including the political structure of the state rep's office and the state senator's office, for people to bring, you know, their, you know, I have this problem. And this, in, in the past, as far as I know, it was not uncommon for state reps or state senators, or even congressmen, to step in with their staff, do the investigation, and redirect or get some help to the individual. I'm, I'm not, I don't mean to imply we're duplicating anything here, but I, I just wanted to understand it a little bit more, what's going on.
Sure.
Can I add this sort of philosophical note, if you don't mind?
Sure.
The great division between all human activity is that which is voluntary and that which is mandatory. And as soon as it becomes mandatory, it, it's, it goes away from being, for lack of another word, a Christian donation. And that gets us into dangerous territory. So, but I'm gonna hope that between some of the parties that have spoke tonight, that there is some understanding or appreciation for those structures already in place and staff in place to assist them. I'm not saying they shouldn't be organized, or they shouldn't be appointed, I'm just hoping they're aware that there is social and political structures above this point that have engaged these problems in the past, come up with solutions. So I just want to touch on that. Wait, thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Actually, Mr. Reynolds was first. Don't mind me.
Just for some additional clarification, Mr. Rose, I feel like I'm about to make your night, because, no, I'm, I'm pleased to say that this fund is our 100% voluntary contributions. So when the tax bills go out twice a year, included with the bill is a voluntary contribution form to contribute to the senior and disabled voluntary tax assistance contribution fund. As well, just to advise the board of what kind of, you know, stakes we're talking about, the present balance of the fund is approximately $3,213, so we're not talking about, you know, tremendous amounts of money, which is unfortunate, though I do think drawing attention to it will spur more contributions, which is great. But I do want to, you know, piggyback off of what you said on voluntary versus mandatory, and I'm pleased to report that these are 100% voluntary contributions that were donated by residents for the express purpose of defraying the real estate taxes of senior and disabled individuals. And the law is also explicit, just so everyone else is aware, that these are specifically only allowable for real estate taxes, they are not permissible for things like mortgage assistance, fuel assistance, or to defray living expenses. Of course, a dollar not spent on real estate taxes is a dollar available to be spent on some of those other things, so it's kind of six of one, half a dozen of the other, in a sense. But these are 100% voluntary donations that are donated for the express purpose of being dispersed this way.
Music to my ears, it's nice to know that the milk of humankind flows through processing town.
Look for the follow-up of the next tax bill.
About real estate tax, I mean, excise tax.
No, real estate taxes only, it's explicit.
Yes, sir. Yes.
From an assessor's standpoint, I think this obviously is a good program, but I just want to caution, I heard the term reduced taxes, that only happens through the assessor's office.
Okay.
This money can be used to assist payment of taxes. Taxes don't get reduced unless the applicants qualify for all the programs that we already have in town. So I don't want anyone to think, oh, I'm getting a tax reduction. No, they will get assistance to pay the tax bill, but it's not the tax reduction.
It's a one-time thing.
However, it's managed, but I, it's not a tax reduction, it's assistance, which is good.
Great. Lenny, your motion was on the floor?
And I think I seconded it.
Oh, you did, I'm sorry. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Peter Karen is an aye. Thank you.
Yes, that we take it, I don't know.
I was just going to mention that.
Yeah, because we have the whole fire department here.
I don't want you guys standing around all night, so can there be a motion to take nine C out of order, please?
A motion to take nine C out of order, request a purchase ETV from the fire department gifted house.
Second. Any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening.
Oh, I'm sorry, so you got the whole...
(inaudible). Oh, sure.
Oh, geez, sorry.
How we doing?
Good, how we doing?
Good. So we're looking...
So we're looking to purchase a UTV for the fire department. Um, the funds predominantly were raised by fundraising efforts. I have the president of the Fire Association and several, several of the officers from the Fire Association with me. Um, they were all predominantly raised by efforts through that group. Um, this, the gift account is donations from usually people who have passed away, and they choose to make charitable donations to the gift account for the fire department. So the balance, I forget what it is exactly. I know we, we raised $23,010, Justin, um, through the Fire Association, and the remainder will come from the gift account that was donated, roughly a thousand dollars, just over a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Um, and there's plenty of money in that account to cover that $1,000.
Sure. I'm not going to question you, sir, about whether it's the best use of your money. I'm sure you've already done that. And I'm assuming it is.
It is. So, so what spurs it is a couple of things. Um, we have, as everybody knows, the rail trail coming through town. Um, there's a lot of areas that are inaccessible to us for several miles in some cases. This will give us the ability to get on the trail, have access to put patients, if they have medical emergencies, on them and get them back to the point where we can have the ambulance standing by. It also gives us the ability with the skid unit we want to put in it, to get into the military pits, which we have fires regularly in the summer. Um, and there's less and less access as time goes on. There's issues with the end of Councilup Way and accessing the pits through there now. So this will give us the ability to get in and bring water in and put out fires in the pits as well, in those hard-to-reach areas.
Okay. Great. Um, Mr. Hall, you have a question?
It's more of a procedural question. Are we voting to approve the vehicle or are we voting to make a line transfer to pay for it?
So the way I understand it, Mike, if I could?
Yes.
Is it's, it's to expend the funds?
Yes.
From that account?
Correct. So from a legal standpoint, the, the board of selectmen has to approve the expenditure of the funds from any gift account. Correct?
Yes.
No, I don't have any questions.
So a motion on the floor, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for the Dyton Fire Department to purchase a utility terrain vehicle using funds from the Fire Department gift account.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And PD Cameron is a nay.
If I could, just, I'd like to really recognize, by all means, I, I have a small group of the Fire Association here. And without these members' efforts and, and many, many more, um, this purchase would not be able to happen. Um, and this is not affecting any taxpayer dollars or anything like that. They, these guys worked their butts off and girls that we have to raise these funds, and it really should be acknowledged and appreciated for that.
Okay, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone, for coming out.
Uh, is the motion go back into the, the agenda summary?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Any discussion?
Aye.
And, um, so, uh, onto announcements, please.
Um, the town parking ban, no person shall park a motor vehicle between the hours of 12:00, midnight to 6:00 a.m. on any street from November 1st of each year to April 1st of the following year. Police will take notice. The town site food bank will be held next on March 16th, located at Town Hall, 979 Somerset Avenue. It's in the lower level. Notice of open waiting lists. Taunton Greens is pleased to announce that they will be accepting applications for one, two, and three-bedroom affordable income wait lists. Applications will be available February 20th, 2024, to March 19th, 2024. To request an application by phone, please call 508-822-2501. Help support the James Bray Garden. The garden was established in 2021 and directly benefits the Dyton community. All produce is donated to the Dyton Library, Food Pantry, and Lincoln Village residents. We'd love to have you join, whether you're a seasoned gardener, enjoy being outside, or want to ensure the success of the community. Um, for more, you can email Kevin Smith at ksmith@dyton-mass.gov or myself, and Mello at dyton-mass.gov. And then Kevin Smith just gave me an update that we are going to have a kickoff, um, in regards to the garden on the day of the Easter egg hunt, um, 3/23 at 12:00 p.m. and we'll meet at the garden. So anyone that's interested, please come. Um, and then you can do an Easter egg hunt afterwards.
An Easter egg hunt is a big thing.
Yeah.
Uh, Tommy, administrative report?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, first of all, like, uh, uh, oh, yeah, like, one, like, thank you, like, for that, my, like, I actually, uh, I actually did just remember, like, I left my weedy wrapper in the shed. So I, I do have to grab that before the, the season starts. But I just, um, I just quickly have a couple of things. Number one, um, I want to provide a quick update on the Town Hall railing, the Town Hall railing, Town Hall railing and stairway project, um, which has been underway since actually the beginning of this week. Uh, they can, um, and will continue for approximately three to four weeks. Uh, just, just to share with everyone, uh, just to share with everyone at home, the main level parking lot and Town Hall's, and Town Hall's main level entrance will be closed for the duration of construction. Um, so residents who are, who are entering, who are entering Town Hall or have to do business at Town Hall, um, we, those, those residents were asking to enter through the Town Hall lower level entrance during the construction project. Um, and those residents who have difficulty accessing the main level, uh, oh, yeah, like, I would encourage, I would encourage to call the Selectmen's Office, uh, 508, 508-669-6431, option one. Uh, like, and we will do whatever it takes to help any residents who, uh, who need help, who need help access, who need help accessing the main level. Uh, and just, and just also in relation to that, um, in relation to that, in, uh, in relation to that, in accordance with the open meeting law, uh, we have been, we have been working with the Town Clerk's Office to have, to have all board committee, uh, and related public agendas and notices, uh, uh, actually public, uh, uh, like, uh, like, uh, like, actually published on the inside, published on the inside window of the foyer on the lower level. So we do have, so we do have access to all those agendas and meeting notices 24/7. So I just wanted to provide an update on that. Um, like, I als, oh, yeah, okay, oh, yeah, like, I also just wanted to provide some, have some additional comments on, uh, like, on, uh, like, uh, uh, like, uh, uh, like, on the police chief hiring process, um, uh, 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 that, uh, that, uh, uh, that we have continued to work through. Um, it has, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, I think for all of us, it's been a long few weeks. Uh, and for me, I've evaluated, and, and I reevaluated, and I've evaluated again how we got here. Oh, yeah, then there, ha, oh, oh, yeah, there's been like a lot of, a lot of feedback, they're well-deserved feedback. Um, how, oh, the, 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 how of the criticism, the criticism that I have placed, have placed on myself throughout this process, uh, like, I just, oh, 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 yeah, I just want to share with everyone that it's there. Uh, and I have placed the same type, same type of feedback on myself. Um, and I, oh, uh, 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 now, as I mentioned last week, I have been my biggest critic, biggest critic about what happened, uh, like, and what, uh, like, uh, like, what actually went wrong through this process. And I do again, uh, I do again apologize for the parts, uh, like, uh, like, how the processes that were updated but not followed. Uh, like, I, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I can, oh, oh, can I, oh, can I also again, I want to, I want to make sure that I, uh, that I am taking ownership, I'm taking ownership and responsibility for, I'm taking, uh, I'm taking ownership and responsibility for where, oh, yeah, like, what really happened with the process. Um, oh, yeah, I want to take ownership on the impact that it, that it has really, other members of the board, uh, like, oh, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, I can, oh, like, oh, like, oh, yeah, I can truly reelect the town as a community. Um, uh, oh, yeah, like, I promised, you know, like, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, I'm already taking the opportunity that one from it to, oh, to grow from it, to adjust from it, like, and make it better. Uh, like, oh, oh, like, and I, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, I do, uh, uh, I do actually think in the future, we do have opportunities really to make it better. But I just want to say sorry again. Um, and, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, like, and we do have, I just want to say sorry again. Uh, I just want to, I just want to say sorry again. Again, I know that I have to take what happened through this process, have to do this process to make it better as well. So like, I just wanted to, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, like, I have just, and as I mentioned, evaluating, uh, uh, like, I've been evaluating, I've been evaluating everything, I've been evaluating everything here, and I just wanted to share that with the board and with the town. So, thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Um, onto Selectmen's reports. Uh, in no way was this prepared with, uh, me knowing Mike was going to do this this evening, but I wanted to comment about what happened within this last week. I think Wednesday night was very emotional for everyone who attended. And, um, but I want to start off with two apologies. One to both Nicole and Lenny, who, or Mr. Hall and Mrs. Mello, for blindsiding you with what happened. Uh, in no way was it fair to either one of you to, um, you were not prepared the way we were prepared in the, um, way information was, was placed, uh, put out, uh, without giving you the, the proper notification, as well as the procedure that, uh, that was followed. That night, um, like I said, was emotional for all of us. We, in no way anticipated the crowd, although we anticipated the size, uh, we nobody anticipated their passion. As I said, um, or Mike said, the procedure wasn't followed the way, uh, it was supposed to be. Uh, by no means was it intentional on anybody's part. We had simply forgot, uh, and I don't mean to simplify anything, but we simply forgot that Lenny made a motion to, um, have four people, um, four, uh, offices to choose from as part of their certification. And when we, as a committee, got to that point, uh, when we were discussing it, we, it slipped my mind that we were supposed to have four, four people. Uh, Lenny, I thank you for, um, picking up on that. And it, um, it's not something that's going to happen again, that's for sure. We, um, the process was probably flawed, uh, from the beginning. Not so much from how the procedure happened, but was, what was listed for us to, to do. The, it needs a little tweaking, and I can guarantee you that as long as I am on the board, we will tweak it for any department head that has to be, um, appointed, not just the, the police department. It, um, it, like I said, it being an emotional night for, for everyone that was in the audience, I did not anticipate that by only having one candidate, that the reaction would be what it was. It was, again, completely caught off guard as to what, um, what the, uh, audience wanted. It, um, we, we knew going into it that it was going to be, like I said, an emotional night. Some things were said that were just not true, and, um, and other things that were very accurate. One of the things that was not true, and I don't want to hop on this, but we were accused of not supporting the police department, which is an outright lie. Um, we backed the blue just as much as everybody else in town backs the blue. The police department is, is, is a great organization. It protects the town. And, um, we felt that as much as the procedure wasn't followed, we had full support of, of George as the police chief, uh, from early on. Things were done to, um, accommodate him, as it was to accommodate everyone else. And it has to go notice that we didn't take this decision lightly. We, we, again, apologize for the way the information was put out. But, um, I'm hoping that you two, uh, the two of you accept our apologies, uh, my apology, and I take full responsibility for it. Uh, the buck stops, stops with the selectman, uh, and myself being the chair. And I just hope that as we go forward, uh, the two of you can, can look at this as a learning experience from, from us, because I certainly have. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Nicole, you have next?
Um, so of course, I, I want to address some similar issue. I want to address, like, during the meeting, that, um, I know residents were upset that I did not second Selectman Hall's motions. Um, at the time, the feedback I was getting from residents was that some of the individuals that were in this process or interviews were not made aware in what they felt were proper ways, that they were, um, not moving on to the next step. Um, and I did not think it would be appropriate to second those motions and have this other officer, that we can't forget, is involved as well, to find out that he has been weeded out, um, through a public meeting. Um, it just didn't feel right. Um, I care about Dyton, but we're not a silo. We need to care about our other communities. And that other officer, um, did not deserve to be treated that way. As well as, I felt that it was not appropriate with George not being there. Um, this is a big moment for him. This is a big thing for him. And I thought that it needed to be that he was there. Yes, his family was there, but I thought that he should be there as well. Um, so I did want to address that because I know that that was, um, something that people were very upset about, and probably one of the hardest things I've ever had to do. Um, it was not pleasant on my part. Um, I, it was awful. Um, but I felt strongly about not, um, having that other officer find out that way, as well as, um, having the acting chief there, if that was the way that we were going to go. Um, I don't have anything else to report.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
I do have several things. But before I get into that, Mr. Mullin, Mr. Karen, there's no I in team. We all owe an apology to the residents of the town. I'm not really going to be okay with Mr. Karen and Mr. Mullin taking full responsibility within this as a team. Ms. Mello, I apologize for offending you. Um, we all had some things that were perceived as missteps. We learned from this. We will move forward. Melissa St. Warren did an incredible job reaching out to all of us and to many, many residents through social media to look at this objectively. And one of the messages that came from Melissa, and I totally hope the community will embrace this. There were mistakes made. We addressed those mistakes. We will continue to address those mistakes. And we promise you, it won't happen again. For the good of this community, we need to move on. This isn't about vengeance. This is not about going into the dark. This is not about the keyboard warriors causing more division in this town. This is about the town working together for the betterment of the town. Thank you. In regards to the committees that I attended, or meetings that I attended, school committee, um, they approved the Dyton Hobart Regional, um, High School Trip to the British Isles for 2025. The Dyton Elementary School received a $5,000 Feinstein Award for Academic Excellence. This is the second year that I know in a row that they have won. And on a more serious note, um, I believe next week, we're going to be meeting with Vincom and the Dyton Board of Selectmen, uh, Committee to talk about budgets. Those are going to be very, excuse me, very difficult conversations, simply because we are about $800,000 a pop. simply because we are about $800,000 a house on that. So, as we review the budget, I'm hoping both sides can sharpen their pencil. Uh, the Dyton redevelopment, uh, Dyton Industrial Development Commission, they're doing some incredible things. They established their priorities for the next year. Uh, the Taunton, their five priorities are taking a look at Taunton Riverfront development, land use, working closely with the Land Use Committee, uh, working closely with the Trails and Recreation and Parks Committee, and developing more open space, uh, zoning bylaw update, and the Agricultural Committee. And I've got, and he's here tonight. Mr. Reynolds at the DDIC meeting came up with an incredible idea that the town should take a look at possibly renting town land. You know, every year, Mr. Reynolds, I believe, takes in land, tax title and what that, we have that land just sitting there, uh, and we're not generating any income out of it until we have an auction. If it would be at all possible to look into establishing so that maybe we could rent that land to farmers, so that they could farm it, and then we would make some money off of that, help pay the bills. Um, the other thing of note in regards to agriculture, I attended the House Ways and Means Committee meeting, which Pat Hadad is the vice chair, and there were two things that came out of it. Mr. Cabral's solar project is very unique. The town of Dyton, and, and I had the opportunity to explain it, um, to the Secretary of Agriculture, and some people took a look, that, took a look at it and were amazed. There aren't many communities that have a solar project on a farm that is still being processed as a farm. Because one of the concerns of crustaceans staying is farms are disappearing, partly because the price of production doesn't come anywhere close to what they have coming in, because the subsidies from the federal government are less. Doing what we are doing, what Mr. Cabral is doing, is a way to help save farms, because it's a way for them to generate additional income by renting their space above the farmland or, and get rental income while continuing to grow crops. Um, the other thing that I failed to mention when I was talking about the school department, we really need to reach out to Representative Hadad. She's a former educator. We got some serious problems with the governor's budget in funding education. And as we all know, that the House will weigh in, and hopefully, especially in the area of special education and transportation, the House will be more amenable to adding additional funds. So although we're probably going to hear some low and pain from the school department, which I heard at the last meeting, um, it's far from over. And what often happens when they reconcile the budget between the House side and the governor's side, there's usually additional funds available. And having gone through this process many times in Taunton, and as a school committee member, we in FinCom need to look objectively and not get caught up with the emotion that the sky is falling. The school department does have the option of later on, through supplemental budget requests, before, or recall of, of the people who are laid off during the, to amend their budget as additional funds come to them. The other thing to keep into consideration and review, because we'll be getting our budget soon, is what we can and can't do with E and D ones. So, I, I just want the board to, to be aware that there are many options and that when we meet with the school department, um, we should barely do our homework, because, as I said at the school committee meeting, we all must share the pain. And there is some economic pain coming to the town in the night. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, is there any old business to discuss, Mike?
No.
There's no list to, so we can move on to new business? Um, review, discuss, and act fiscal year 2025 budget, the warrant article, articles, uh, revenues and budget process.
Yeah, yeah, like, I can kick off them. All I can, like, I just wanna apologize to the board, I just, um, had a little bit of a bloody nose. And, uh, there's one resident in town who, um, who had recently had a bloody nose, and he's already attributing that to high stress and everything, so I'm probably playing into that. But, um, I'm attributing, I'm attributing it, just to be clear, to the, uh, the very dry air in the council meeting.
And take it up with maintenance.
Yes, exactly. But, um, uh, yeah, yeah, I just wanted, I just wanted to, like, remind everyone that the warrant for the annual town meeting is now open. Um, it was open last week on February 28th, and, um, as a warrant, the annual town meeting warrant will be open till it closes on April 10th, 2024. Um, uh, okay, else, uh, okay, else, uh, yeah. Oh, yeah, guy in the town account, we just wanted to, um, also, also provide an update on FY 2020, 2025 budget planning process. Um, as we know, for the last few months, we've been continuing planning efforts really, uh, really with the priority accordance, um, that we've been, that we've been placing on our budget forecasting, uh, uh, on budget projection efforts. Um, and so for the past few months, we knew, for the past few months, we knew that we've been planning, uh, that we've been planning for FY 25 based on very limited, based on a very limited growth in revenues, really only about $730,000 in additional revenue, um, planning for, uh, like, in going into FY 25 than we had in FY 24. However, like, all, however, like, all, all, like, all, uh, also, at the same time, we know where we have been the last few years in terms, uh, 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 yeah, in terms of our D R assessment increases being, uh, like, in the area, uh, like, in the area of about $450,000 per year. So, yeah, like, up, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, up in, like, up until last week, even though we, uh, uh, like, even though we had been project, we had, uh, we, uh, we have been projecting much more limited revenue growth, uh, you know, like, we, uh, uh, we believe we had, uh, within an ability of about, um, additional 700, oh, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, within the additional $730,000, we thought we did have an ability to absorb everything you need to, uh, 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 yeah, like, oh, yeah, like, as we head into FY 25, but that all changed about a week ago. Um, when, uh, when, uh, uh, when, uh, when we, uh, uh, like, uh, when we heard from D R, uh, when we heard from D R that change, uh, that changes in the district chapter, uh, 70 revenue has, has the potential to place a burden, uh, like, of an additional one point, uh, of an additional $1.3 million assessment increase on our budget. Uh, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I did, oh, uh, in FY 25, so we had been building a budget with, uh, uh, with, uh, uh, with, in essence, a place holder. We had been building FY 25 budget with a place holder, uh, like, uh, of about $500,000 of D R assessment increases next year. Uh, like, along with place holders for utility increases, along with place holders for utility increases and, along with place holders, along with place holders for utility increases in terms of bargaining operations. Um, so, so with us having, with us only, with us only having and projecting about $730,000, like, a new revenue, and with, uh, uh, like, even just the proposed D R assessment alone, having, having a $1.3 million increase, uh, uh, just essentially from a, a new perspective, that clouds out our ability, uh, to do anything else, like, and even then leaves us an $800,000 deficit. And so, um, so, 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 yeah, oh, so, so, yeah, so, yeah, like, and as a result, like, I'm very concerned about where we're actually heading in the FY 25 budget process. Uh, in FY, in FY 25 budget process right now, like, we did probably gather a joint meeting with FinCom, uh, like, and also, uh, like, and, uh, also with the school superintendent and reps. Oh, yeah, like, and reps, uh, rep from the school committee next week. Um, how, oh, yeah, like, oh, oh, yeah, oh, and how we now, a budget, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, a whole budget planning and situation is very fluid. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, like, right, oh, 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 and I think from here on up, as we plan the, oh, meeting, um, uh, like, oh, oh, like, oh, like, oh, like, oh, uh, uh, go over the next, uh, go over the next three to four months, we're really gonna have some challenges. And I'ma do, uh, like, actually, like, I didn't, oh, yeah, like, really want to begin with it. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah, talk anymore about. Uh, like, uh, oh, yeah, like, actually, like, any opportunity we do have in revenue, so we do have, you know, like, a broader understanding of, like, of what is actually bringing us to that. Uh, uh, to, uh, to, uh, to that approximately $730,000 increase, like, so. Uh, 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 yeah, we do have our town accountant, uh, with us, get to talk, uh, with us, like, a little more about that, like, the options we have, however, like, you, oh, yeah, like, oh, oh, yeah, like, oh, yeah, even though we do have some revenue options, it's not nearly close enough to, oh, yeah, to be able to close at $800,000, yeah. So Serena?
Thank you. Oh, girl, hi. Um, so as Mike said, the budget right now is very preliminary. Um, we still haven't really met with each department, so there are some big departments that we haven't reviewed, um, their request or anything. So the budget overview that was provided in the packet that has the excess levy capacity of the $688,000, um, you can see in the top section that how Mike said that there's approximately 730 for new revenue. So that comes with the Prop 2 and 1/2 increase that we can do and what we estimate for new growth. Um, so typically, that would have been fine, um, we really weren't expecting D R to come in so high. Um, so that 688, that's the excess levy capacity, is with the D R level funded at what it was for '24. So just so we're aware of, um, where that number came from. So the past two weeks, um, I have been going over the revenues, looking at five-year trends, um, six-year trends, seven-year trends. I went a little further than strictly just five years, because the COVID years were in there, and I feel that could have skewed, um, you know, I wasn't actually here at, at that point, so I wasn't sure exactly if you guys did, you know, spending freeze, or, um, you know, the revenues had been adjusted for, you know, maybe not the initial year, but the year after that. Um, so initially, we have been going through the revenues, it's making some adjustments, um, where, you know, the trends have been coming in higher, so we do feel comfortable that we can raise it. We do have to also be conservative that if, you know, we can't raise the revenues too much, because then if we don't meet and turn into a revenue deficit, that deficit would be turned over to be raised and appropriated on the residents. So I am really being cautious with what, you know, I'm comfortable with raising the actual, you know, local revenues to. Um, you know, some trends can be a little skewed or certain things. Um, so the initial analyzing that we have come up with, um, a couple of things, has brought us a net increase from last year of about $50,000, but that's very minimal when we're trying to come up with the 800 above and beyond, you know, what we had anticipated for the schools. So as, you know, we meet with other departments, some bigger departments, that excess levy capacity, as it stands right now, does have the possibility of decreasing, um, because we haven't reviewed everybody's requests. And I know, um, we might be waiting on some quotes for, um, you know, liability insurances or things that have been trending to increase a lot within the past few years, and we have, don't really have that quote yet for '25. But I am anticipating that, you know, there are certain lines that are gonna be a big jump from '24, um, you know, besides the obvious of, like, health insurance and, um, other expense lines in that view. Um, and then when it comes to the state revenues, the cherry sheet, this assessment, there was, you know, a little bit of money has increased to the unregistered general government aid has gone up at this point, which, and it still has three other boards to review their budget, so the same thing. Their budget is very preliminary as well. And as a new budget comes out, I will update the document and to try to keep with, you know, the new budgets coming up from the state and how it's gonna affect us. Um, because that also does have a potential to hit a certain department and be cut. Um, so just to be aware of that as well. Um, but it's looking kind of grim, to be honest. Like, I'm trying to squeeze out as much revenues as we can. Um, and then, you know, we're gonna have to cut down on expenses and requests naturally to present a zero-based budget where the revenues coming in directly offsets the expenses going out. Um, so the meetings coming up are definitely gonna be, um, hard, and we're all gonna have to make some tough decisions and figure out where exactly we're gonna come up with extra money. Um, I do not suggest using free cash, because free cash is a one-time source. And if we put that into our budget now and then don't have it next year, we're gonna have to make up for it twice, essentially. Um, so I, and, you know, taking money out of stabilizations, you know, those type of things are one-time options. It's really just a band-aid.
Is there any depart, not department, uh, any, uh, revenue that you're being awfully optimistic?
Yeah.
That we should be less than?
Yes. So that actually has, um, presented itself as well when I did the analyzing, that there are a few, um, that I did reduce, um, and then other ones that we raised. So the net is an additional 50, but.
Right, okay.
Yeah, so I, I am very cautious with, you know, staying within what we're actually receiving and what, you know, we're expecting to come in the future as far as, like, permits or license or projects.
What did we take in during the auction of that land that we did in the summer or?
Um, I believe we brought over $104,000 into the general fund.
Is he anticipating any auction of land this year?
Um, I think it may have come up, but I don't think he has any plans for that.
Yeah, he's actually, he, oh, yeah, oh, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, he, uh, he, in terms of the treasure, he is entertaining, he is, he is entertaining actually working, reaching out to the D R to do what's called, to do what's called an auction, to do what's called like an auction of low value.
Okay.
Um, so we do have, we do have smaller reindeer properties in town. Um, oh, yeah, like, oh, oh, uh, uh, oh, uh, uh, yeah, that for, for whatever reason, haven't, uh, haven't actually paid taxes. Um, oh, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, oh, oh, yeah. Oh, again, that, that's one-time revenue as well. So it might help us close a little bit, like, in FY 25, but it does dig, it does dig a deep hole. Uh, like, in terms of how we plan for, uh, FY 26 as well, like, I mean, no, oh, yeah, like, I mean, like, I mean, no, I'm ready to, like, FY 26 with BP. Uh, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, will also have its own challenges as well, so. Um, it's, oh, yeah, no, we definitely have challenges right now.
Okay. Mr. Hall, do you have a concern?
A few things. Right now, there's a moratorium on building. And there are a lot of projects in Arvo that are coming down the road, if you will. And because the Dyton Water District doesn't have enough water, the moratorium will remain in place. But something to think about, and I know it does all But something to think about, and I know it does open up potential floodgates for more development. But money's getting tight and building permits and impact fees can help this town when we need money and also not hit the taxpayers. If there could be a coordinated effort with the planning board, Mr. Mullin and Water District to look at the possibility trying to work in agreement with the developers, that they would do like they do in Rehoboth and go with wells. With the understanding that they would, once the Dayton Water District comes up with a water source, tie in. I know there were supplementary discussions with a developer off of Milk Street in Dayton about that. And then the developer backed off and I'm not sure why, but he has started the process again. But as we look at developers that are looking to come in and call be and help back, and I know one who goes to the Water District meeting at least every other month saying, what are you gonna end the moratorium, what are you gonna end the moratorium? Cause he wants to build. And I'm just wondering if we could coordinate an effort and the planning board, it has to be on board with that too, as well as Mr. Agia. To see if these developers, so we can move some of these projects along, so we can generate some income. The other thing, I've been asking for over a year, and this would take a vote at town meeting. When are we going to get a proposed im, uh, developer's impact by law? Where we start generating the revenues like Taunton does? When my former student at Hart's Four Corners is required by the town of the city of Taunton to put in lights at Hart's Four Corners if he wants to put in his plaza. That cost him a lot of money. So he could put his plaza in, where are we at in that process to generate additional funds? Um, the other thing I mentioned to Mr. Mullin today, when we get time to work on this, and we're gonna need to, cause ultimately the voters will decide. I would like to give the voters in June a choice. Cuts in school or these are the consequences if we don't cut school. Now that may sound tough, but ultimately it's not the Board of Selectmen or FinCon who makes that decision. It'll be the residents of Dayton as it should be.
Okay, so you're looking for, um, like different, two different budget proposals? I would have to come with, you know, bottom line number.
Is that easy to do or very difficult? I'm not trying to create that.
Yeah, like we would also, oh, yeah, like we would all, oh, like we would all, oh, like we would also, like in terms of what actually goes in the warrant to town meeting would be a budget recommendation, so we'd have to, oh, 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 yeah, oh, yeah, just thinking about it. We have to structure the mechanics of the warrant, oh, oh, yeah, like in a, in a way that really structures though having a budget recommendation in there and. Yeah, I don't have the mechanics of how that would go yet because we need to actually have a budget recommendation, am I correct, Nancy?
The, the townspeople cannot vote a law school budget. You have to negotiate it before it hits the warrant. Because in the not too far ago, the FinCon always waited to find out what was gonna happen with the negotiations between the town of Rehoboth and the regional school district. Quite often, Rehoboth was successful in getting a reduction in the total budget. Their assessment went down, which automatically meant Dayton's went down. However, it may have been second to last year that Mr. Swartz was on the FinCon. Rehoboth approved the district budget. Dayton said, no, we can't do that. It doesn't work in the opposite. The state pretty much told Dayton, you will meet your share of that budget. So because it's a regional district, the financial rules that apply, we don't have that kind of ability. That's why it always has to be determined before you go to that town meeting. I mean, we got whacked when Dayton says, uh, when Rehoboth said, we'll pay that, we'll pay our share of that. And Dayton says, we will, the state says, yeah, you will. Because if you don't do it, we're gonna take it out of your state aid. So in theory, yes, we should be able to say, uh, we can't afford it therefore, but it's just like we're dealing with bond, with bond issues right now. We've got bond issues facing us that we've got to fund somehow. We can't not do it because those are regional districts and there are different rules that apply. I agree with you, I'd like to have that power. Back in the olden days, I mean, the real olden days, school committees had fiscal autonomy. And when you went into town meeting, it was a knock down drag out at the old Dayton High Gym. Every department was fighting for their share of the budget. And I can remember the late Chuck McKenna and the late Joe White. Joe White was fire chief, Chuck was chairman of the local school committee, battling out for the money. And the voters did decide who got what. We, that went away, all right? And now that we're a full K to twelve region, we're further restricted as far as what our voters can do.
No, do you have any questions for Serena?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yeah, I may, I went to the finance advisory committee, which was just ahead of the meeting that, uh, Mr. Hall was at. And just before it wrapped up, uh, the superintendent did give us a handout, which is in the paperwork that I saw. Um, and he did state that they would be going into the public hearing with numbers that had been given to us. However, those numbers are not final, uh, it's still considered preliminary. And he said, uh, last fall, there was a comment made about tax base of concern because of declining enrollment, but no change in, uh, the number of employees. And I kind of chuckled because I'm the one that made that point. And he did say they are talking to the unions, they are talking about staff reductions, and they anticipate that there will be further cuts in the budget. I don't know if it's gonna be enough to help with what we're facing, but I'm just keeping in mind what he said and I'm hoping that number is going to get reduced somewhat. Um, even the, I was speaking totally from a Dayton standpoint, but the people in that committee from Rehoboth were all in agreement. You know, all the people are saying, you gotta do something.
Right.
As we've seen, when we came across that test from North Fork Aggie, the two areas, this governor's budget is really wet for schools, a special ed and transportation. So we really need to reach out to Representative Hadoff, cause she's our rep, but also she's the vice chair of the House Ways and Means Committee. And lobby the other reps to put more money in those two line items. Mrs. Hadoff is a former educator, so I'm sure she understands what burden it is on the cities and towns to meet this state mandate because it's a two edged sword. You're getting less funding, but you have all these mandates that you have to do. And that's really hurting not just Dayton, all the cities and towns across Conwell.
Thank you. Uh, we have nothing to act on this, but it says review.
No, no, yeah, like it's just like an update.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, like it's just like an update, oh, it's just an update in twenty four F Y twenty five for the board and the town has all the information we do at this point.
Okay. Um, then we're moving on to B, which is review, discuss and act, alerts the Massachusetts Municipal Association, MMA, guiding appointments, the MMA's Committee on Energy and the Environment. Um, Mr. Hall, this is something that you requested, so do you wanna take it over?
Yes. Um, it was brought to my attention that former selectman Nancy Gulat was not being reappointed to the MMA Board Policy Committee on Energy and the Environment. Mrs. Gulat had served on that committee for the last eighteen years. And Mrs. Gulat was made aware that she wasn't being reappointed. But really, no reason was given. We are all well aware of Mrs. Gulat's contribution to the residents of Dayton in many areas, but especially stormwater. Mrs. Gulat's knowledge and understanding of stormwater has been recognized statewide as one of the most knowledgeable select or residents on the issue. Mrs. Gulat's not an engineer, but she's learned a lot about the process and has earned the respect of both this community and people across the state and definitely the people that serve on the committee with her. I asked that this be put on the agenda and I had asked that a letter be sent to the MMA expressing our disappointment that Mrs. Gulat was not reappointed to the Committee on Energy and Environment, especially after representing the town of Dayton in the Board of Selectmen for the past eighteen years. And also aware that southeastern Massachusetts is underrepresented on that committee as well. So that's why I brought it before the board this evening. And Mr. Mullin was so kind to draft a letter that we have.
Okay, great.
Yeah, like I'd say that as well.
Okay. Well, Mrs. Gulat, thank you very much for, uh, for everything that you do, but all that time on, on one board is remarkable. But, um, it's a shame that you're not reappointed.
There, if I may, there, there was no question that the executive board at MMA picks and chooses who gets reappointed. The letter, excuse me, the email, the first one I got basically said, we don't have any space for you. And I questioned that. Um, you were all copied on those emails that went back and forth. I got a further explanation of there were so many applications, there was no room for me on this committee. Which is kind of funny because depending upon, uh, which meeting it is, we've, we've been using Zoom. I count the people who were there and I'm thinking, how come today it's twenty three, but next time it's thirty one? How many people are on this committee in any case? What bothers me the most is the fact that that email went out to all of you. Only one selectman responded to me saying, what? My not being reappointed has nothing to do with space or qualifications or knowledge or anything else. My reappointment was denied because I always looked at things from the Dayton and southeastern Massachusetts perspective, because this is home to me. And I spoke out against things that made no sense, opposed the bottle bill repeatedly because it was gonna mean an additional fifty million dollars to the state. Well, that tells me it's a failure. You're gonna get an additional fifty million from unclaimed deposits. Then I said, you know what? If this passes, that fifty million should be sent out to all of our communities. We can clean up the trash from the stuff that's not being recycled. There was a proposal, uh, and I won't name the communities, the Tree Huggers. I got nothing against Tree Huggers, but we gotta shut down all incinerators. They pollute the air, they contribute to the whole thing. I said, you can't do that. It's southeastern Massachusetts, that's how we dispose of solid waste. We don't have landfills. We have C Mass incinerator. And all of you who were saying, we got it, you know, are you aware that your communities have ongoing contracts with that incinerator to ship your trash there because they need twenty four seven operation to generate electricity? City of Boston has trucks running constantly. So if you're gonna shut them all down, you're gonna have trash up to the roof because they're taking your trash. People on the committee did not spend the kind of time I did doing research, especially about items like that. There was another proposal, this came from the director, thank goodness he's retired. We need to look at retirement and insurance benefits for all municipal employees, active and retired. Well, I looked around the room, there's a lot of municipal employees or retirees serving. And they're saying, yes, and I'm thinking, are you out of your mind? They're talking about cutting your benefits and I certainly spoke out against that. Again, MMA can do whatever they want. The interesting thing is, there were three of us on the committee, old timers, so to speak. One was an environmental lawyer from Coquamena Page, I don't know what happened to him. One is an engineer from Weston and Sampson, the man who nineteen years ago, when I first went there and said, I got a problem, can anybody help me? He took out a card and says, get in touch with this guy at my firm, okay? That's the man I had relied on for eighteen years. That's the man who led to me getting all that free engineering help to do stormwater work. Saved us money on landfill testing, on and on. He is actually retiring. So I had sent him a note and he sent a note back to me, this is very brief, I'm not, I'm not reading a page. He, he said to me, hey, looks like you're gonna be the senior member now. We used to kid about which one of us has been here longer. So I wrote to him and said, hey, um, I'm not gonna be the senior member, I'm not even going to be a member. This is what he said to me. I'm sorry to hear this Nancy, being I wasn't reappointed. This is the gist of why I wasn't reappointed. You have the courage and the conviction to speak up and truly have the best interests of the taxpayers in your community at heart. Just because the MMA leadership disagreed with some of your suggestions was not a basis for your removal. Shame on them. I wish you all the best, stay in touch and I'm keeping my work email and phones, you know, just get in touch with me, all right? The decision was made the day of the annual meeting when the now retired director was scurrying around, trying to find members or residents from Dayton there who attended. They would not have taken this action without the okay of town administration. There is no question in my mind, because for the past eighteen years, every single board has supported me and reappointed me because of the value of my being involved with that association all those years. The financial benefits that came back to the town. There was even a Board of Selectmen who, the guy who was the newly elected person defeated me in election when I said to him, hey, there's a, there's a month or two gap between me being a selectman and going back on FinCon. I don't wanna lose my spot on MMA. And the answer was, don't worry about it. You write that letter and we'll sign it. But I always had the full support of the Board of Selectmen. And I felt in this case, because nobody responded to me except Mr. Hall, about what? There was knowledge and I felt like I was hung out to dry. Again, I have no question at all. Again, I have no question at all, MMA can do it. But I also want to point out, I was appointed unanimously by the Board of Selectmen to serve until the next time you do appointments. Nobody has the right to do anything about that appointment in this town, except a full voting board. And the way I look at this is, I thought of, remember the old fence viewers and field drivers? And then we realized, we don't do field drivers. That was brought to this board with the request, dissolve this position, and it goes away. So what needs to be done is, this position that has been reappointed for 18 years needs to be dissolved, because it no longer exists. If somebody from the town of Dyton ever gets appointed again, they've got to come to you and say, they want you to serve on whatever committee it is. But I just wanted, when, after Mr. Hull contacted me, and I looked at the whole thing, I said, this is wrong. Yes, MMA can do it, but you know what? I expected something different from the people I worked with day in and day out, who know, or should know, what my involvement has meant with that committee. So, as I said in my email, and that email I just read to you, that was attached to it. That email from that person means more to me than anything else, because he sat there at those meetings when I was the only no, no, and explained why. I also wrote to accept, but I want you to know, whenever I have taken and written a letter to the editor, it always starts with, this action is not reflective of any board, committee, commission, or membership in any organization I may hold. I want them to know, as a resident and a taxpayer, why I'm upset about, whether it's the bottle bill or whatever. Because unless the town appropriately says, go in there and fight this one for us, I'm not representing truly the town of Dyton. That's why if I write a letter, they know it's coming from me, the home address, the whole bit. But I also made it clear, as a Dyton resident and as southeastern Mass, we're underrepresented. And I just wanted them to know, at least there's one person coming from this part of the state who is not going to sit there and agree with everything, so that there are no waves. I was asked to chair that committee, because the executive director wanted a woman to take over. The woman that was on it was a selectman and did not get reelected, so she had to leave. I was approached by the two appropriate people at MMA, will you take the chairmanship? Sure. When they told him who the female was they had selected, there was an explosion. Unfortunately, the woman who was an employee of MMA, who served with us, kind of led our committee, shortly thereafter was gone, and I really felt bad for her. Because the, his concern about me should not have carried over to her. The gentleman survived, he still is. But again, anyone who serves on a committee at MMA is there to represent the community that sent them. And if they're sitting there going, mm-hmm, yeah, that sounds good, and never questions anything, they don't belong there. And as I've said a number of times, of all those committees at MMA, the one that, in my opinion, was the most powerful and far-reaching, that affects our daily lives, was the committee I served on. So, Mr. Hull, I just, I thank you for your support. I thank all of you for the opportunity to tell you this. But in all honesty, there is nobody that would have gone to Boston 18 years in a row, except for COVID, which were obviously done virtual. But I enjoyed my time. I know what I accomplished for this town. And that little brief email tells me, Nancy, 100%, you're right. Because I sat there and listened to you time and time again, and you went right on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. One, Mrs. Gulat, this is not over yet. I really wouldn't want to make a motion to dissolve that position at this time. I'd like to read into the record, I may, a letter that Town Administrator Mullin has drafted to join McLaughlin president Adam Shem Delain, executive director, CEO of the Massachusetts Municipal Association. Dear President McLaughlin and Mr. Shem Delain, I write today to express our disappointment with last one's vote by the Massachusetts Municipal Association's Board of Directors to not reappoint Nancy Gulat to the MMA Policy Committee on Energy and the Environment. As you know, Miss Gulat proudly served as a dedicated member of the committee for the last 18 years. It is our understanding that in December 2023, Miss Gulat expressed her interest to continue serving as a member of the MMA Policy Committee on Energy and the Environment for the 2024 calendar year, but learned after the Board of Directors' February 2024 meeting that she was not reappointed by the board. As a longtime public servant in the town of Dyton and beyond, Miss Gulat continues to bring valuable perspectives to countless policy discussions, especially those relating to stormwater, land use, the environment, and natural resources. Not only has her expertise as the chairman of Dyton Stormwater Committee helped us meet the town's MS4 requirements, but they have also helped to inform MMA's broader advocacy as well. Likewise, we also know that Dyton has benefited and will continue to benefit from the relationship that Miss Gulat has built with state and local officials, federal leaders, and other stakeholders as a result of her tireless efforts. Again, it is important that the Board of Selectmen express our sincere disappointment with the Board of Directors' decision to not reappoint Miss Gulat. Going forward, we would ask the board to consider ways in which the MMA could better recognize the interest of longstanding volunteers who continuously strive to make our community stronger and healthier, healthier in the ways that Nancy does. So at this time, we'd like to make a motion that this letter be sent to the MMA and that Mr. Mullin follow up with a discussion with Mr. McLaughlin while MMA reconsidering their decision.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
P. Cameron, is it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We've already done the utility terrain. Now it's the review, discuss, and act on the fiber contract with R.W. Bryant, 21 Robert J. Wade, Plymouth, Mass.
Yes, again, this has been, this has been a long time coming, like, we talked about, like, giving, like, giving last June, July, and August with regards to the process we received, actually, $201,000 grant from the state, actually, in June of 2022. Like, oh, yeah, and we've had to do a lot of, we've had to do a lot of, we've had to do a lot of, like, a lot of late work and research and deal with some, like, a host of other issues, really, to bring everything forward here today. We did, we did put the project up to bid, like, and R.W. Bryant is a low responsible, in terms of bidder, like, in the amount of $116,000, $116,862, which is within the project budget. Like, every other project cost to have a grant-funded, dedicated public safety, dedicated public safety municipal fiber, dedicated public safety municipal fiber line, run right, right up from Station 1, like, in the new library on the other side of Main Street, like, all the way up 138, into the PD, like, into Town Hall, and then continue up, and then continue up through the village, like, oh, yeah, into Station 2. So it's huge, oh, yeah, like, it's huge improvements for our public safety infrastructure. Like, it's also huge improvements, huge, huge improvements for the library in our municipal infrastructure, infrastructure and technology as well. I'm extremely happy that we're here at this point with the contract. So with that, I recommend approval.
Any questions, Mike? Do you call the question?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the fiber contract with R.W. Bryant, 21 Robert J. Wade, Plymouth, Mass, for the sum of $116,862.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
P. Cameron is in aye. Mr. Hull, approval of the warrant?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion at the town of Dyton paper warrant for March 7, 2024. Item 37A-24, $114,805.14. Item 2, 37P-24, $105,976.91.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
P. Cameron is in aye. No acknowledgements today, no correspondence, we've already done public input, approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the joint meeting between the board, approve the joint meeting minutes between the Dyton Board of Selectmen and Dyton Rehoboth Regional School Committee Budget Subcommittee of November 8, 2023.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
P. Cameron is in aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes of February 14, 2024.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
P. Cameron is in aye.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
P. Cameron is in aye. Thank you.